Yeah, we're required by law. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We have number ninety, Mark Silver, Mark. You know why you're here, Mark, right?
I was looking at all these things, I was.
While you're looking, Mr. Chair?
Okay, go ahead.
I've read the report, I'm sure you did too. These people were flat out drunk, they were in your bar for seven hours. And I think I saw the word intoxicated like.
Fifty times.
Yeah, I hear you. Seven hours of drinking, I don't even do seven hours of sleeping. This is uncalled for. Is the bartender still working with you? And why?
Well, I was hoping to get your response on this thing. These people were not in my bar for seven hours. The way the report reads, certainly they says that, you know, they were drinking since, I don't know, one o'clock or something. Fact of the matter is, they were at the Brewers game. And I drove my shuttle bus that day. And I was in the bar most of the afternoon. And they were not there, and they did not drive up my shuttle bus. Now, this guy's been barred out of my place for about three years. And about two years ago, he got picked up actually on the sidewalk. And I had to come here for him then, Nick Damato. And I'll tell you why, I can tell you it's three years ago, is because he stole pool money from his poolmates that he played with. And consequently, I sent him, you know, wouldn't let him in the bar anymore. But anyway, to get back to this day, I was in the bar in and out, up until almost six o'clock. And he was not there then. Now, he, they came in, I don't, I can't tell you exactly when they came in, my friend, you know, they came in and ordered a pitcher beer, you know, somebody, one of them did. And sat down at a table, and the guy got loud, and it says in there he broke a glass, I don't know if he did or didn't, but he sent him out. Now, my son came in at quarter to eight at night. And these people were not there. And at eight twenty or whatever it was, he called the police, because they were outside fighting. So, I don't know where they were in between time, it says in the report that they were there and they came back. So, I don't know if they were walking from another place back, I don't know. But they were not in the bar all that time, they were at the Brewers game.
But you drove them back from the Brewers game?
No, they were not on my shuttle.
But you drove them?
And I was in the bar myself, so I know he was not there. So, I can't account from six o'clock till whenever my bartender sent him out. This guy's trouble from the word go, his whole family is trouble, I even checked with the police department, I did. They've been arrested, his whole family for ages. And he moved away, he's been gone for a year or something. He was moved to Greenfield someplace. And we haven't seen him, I had a note up on the register you know, over a year ago, and we haven't seen him. And all of a sudden he resurfaced, and I had a bartender that wasn't, you know, didn't know who he was. And consequently, you know, he came in, but we sent him out. So, like I said, I can't speak for how long he was there, it was maybe an hour, maybe it was less, you know. He, we kept him there till he got loud, and we said, see ya, so.
All in may?
Following up on all the person wrote's comments. So you're saying there was alcohol served though, maybe in that last hour?
It could have been, you know, I don't know what he drank there, you know. My bartender said they ordered a pitcher and they set that at a table, so. I don't know which person ordered, I can't say.
My point being, it doesn't matter where you drank beforehand, if they come in intoxicated, it's their job to serve them, no matter what.
I can't argue with that, I agree. I agree. Certainly wouldn't argue that, you know. I don't know what kind of shape they were in, you know, when he got there. But oftentimes, somebody walks a few blocks, and you know, they look okay, they order a beer, and all of a sudden they take two shits of beer. And they're back in, you know, intoxicated form again.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chair?
All in.
Bar to the east of you, they don't run shuttles, do they?
No.
The little bar there, so I guess it's possible he was there.
Yeah.
I thought I, I thought in reading this, I understood he was in by you for like ninety minutes.
That's what one witness says.
Yeah, one person said that, I don't know if that's, you know, factual or.
I think we're just getting to the point that our servers, all the licensed bartenders, need to be more cognizant of the condition of our patrons.
Absolutely. I, I tell my people this all the time, and I mean, they're very good at it. This guy, I have no doubt, I mean, he must have been the most intoxicated one out of the bunch. And I mean, this guy is just trouble, you know, I mean, add alcohol and he's trouble. And so he probably went and sat down and didn't even go up to the bar, you know.
So, I'm gonna assume you have a fresh list of names of people who aren't allowed, and this person's on the list.
Absolutely.
Do you keep a picture, do you keep?
You know, that's one of the things that I, you know, we have done in the past, and I don't happen to have a picture of this guy, because he's been gone for a year.
I don't think anybody does that routinely, I guess, and I just understand how difficult that would be, but.
Oh, no, we've talked about doing it, we have done that in the past, for sure.
And what about the young lady that was involved, his girlfriend, is she allowed in or not?
No, no, I don't want any of them in. You know, I don't know what's with this guy, he's, like I said, he's
I'll agree with that, that name is not unknown in police reports. I'll say that much.
It's unbelievable.
Anybody else have anything? Motion, please, on file?
So moved. Second.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I tell you, we do everything we can do to not have people like that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Yeah, well, just work on it.
I look at the old westerns and you know, the sheriff used to take the guy and take him to the edge of town and say, don't come back. I wish we could do that, you know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Donald Henry. Okay, well, let's Anne, if you could just remind me here now, Fred, the next one's Fred Bell.
He's not on there.
And he.
Thank you.
Fred's license is on there because it's a sixteen seventeen and it was never voted on, we were always waiting.
We were waiting for the court appointments.
Well, right, and we had that in the the committee requested that I issue a summons complaint for the committee, and then we had discussions that that actually wasn't possible after the fact. Upon my review and discussion with Scott, the kind of after the fact violation isn't something we can do, but we can now renew if Fred Bell was still gonna be on there, so that's the conclusion we came to.
Okay, and he has not applied for the New Year.
No.
Okay, so you're back.
Yeah, after he closed it up, then I could come back, because I couldn't work with him, it was like oil and water.
Now, are you all by yourself now?
Yeah, until we're gonna, we're in the process of doing a five oh one C three, at which time we'll have a board, and then the board will take control. Until then, I'm overseeing the day to day operations. And this is some of the things we're doing, we re-instituted, because as you know, in West Dallas and everywhere, opiates is at epidemic precaution. And there's a lot of focus on the treatment, but if there's no place to socialize, have, like say for guys just got out of treatment. Say for instance, he has to go back to the same place he got high at, or they're using it as environment, chances are he'll relapse. Or say if a guy's out of suburbia, he's all day by himself and he's bored. Chances are, he'll go back to doing some stinking thinking and use again, so what we're trying to do is make it available to everyone. When I leave him going to West Bend, I've been all through the community, passing out the flyers, because what had happened when I left, all the meetings had stopped. It was just a, as the guy was saying, a wild, wild west club. And so we're re-instituting recovery, and that's if you see, the top recovery is the principal thing, because it's really about saving lives. You know, people are dying, I've been to so many funerals, I'm tired of going, I wanna take a moratorium, you know, so.
Okay.
It'll serve a purpose.
Does anybody else have anything?
I'm sorry.
Nick?
I mean, I'm just.
Well, I just have, I just have questions about this application. So, remind me. Under eighteen allowed if they're with a parent?
With the parent.
With parent.
Yeah, because there, you have people that's
I understand that.
Addicted at that age.
So, nineteen twenty-one, so we just draw the line at eighteen because of the alcohol, so. Nobody under eight, over eighteen they can come.
Right.
They're adults, I get that, under eighteen if they're there with a parent or.
Or guardian.
Okay. And I'm looking at your entertainment form on the application. Dancing, four pool tables. Amusement machines, five.
That's like a pinball.
Okay, this is not the euphemistic entertainment.
No, we're not gonna do anything that could lead another person that's addicted to another addiction.
Okay.
That would be counterproductive.
And you don't have all Class B licenses, so even if you, just so you know, you can't put any of those in there.
I wouldn't put those in, matter of fact.
I just saw that, checked in.
He had put some in before, and that's when I decided to leave.
I just saw that there, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that you can't have the.
Right, no, that wouldn't even be a thought.
Entertainmental.
That's it?
That's it.
As I was, I have your application reviewed, and while we talk to you about that when I'm done with it shortly. But I ran Just For Today Recovery Club Inc., and it still shows Fred Bell as a registered agent as of today.
That's because of, I guess that's his old permit. I don't know nothing, I renewed the permit, or I got the permit with just my name on it.
You're applying for it now?
Yeah, I'm applying for it now.
Right, but this is through the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions, have you reestablished or?
I will do that this coming week, but we need to, I need to get past this. And I guess his thing is gonna be suspended or not renewed because of the conviction or whatever he got into, so then, he will have nothing to do with this club whatsoever.
So that's gonna be something you're gonna have to adjust with the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institutions, who rules the agent. What this committee could do is that, obviously, there was discussions last time about revoking, or potentially revoking the license for Fred Bell. What we've done in the past is if we want to update or have an additional operation plan that says Fred Bell's not gonna have anything to do with this business at all, that's something that the committee could request, and we can.
Well, I'm the same guy that came before the committee.
I don't know that, but.
Okay, when you say that, okay.
It's much like other issues we had in the past, we can request that as a special plan where if the officers go there, we have this in writing from Mr. Henry.
No problem.
And Fred Bell's hanging on, on scene other than, he's managing the bar or something, or not in the bar, but managing something that.
Never happened.
A problem.
But you wouldn't be starting, this permit starts July first?
I thought it started immediately.
It goes from July to end of June.
Oh, I was just gonna say, the business plan could be just exactly what we did a week ago with Bundy's. Where he said, I'm related to nobody.
I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem doing that, but.
You could do that, that's a feasible.
The.
Sorry.
But, but I'm just, I was just reading your thing, saying Monday, July, June fifth. And technically, you don't have a permit yet until July.
Well, but the previous permit's still in place.
Correct.
Correct?
But it's not in his name.
Well, only if the other guy complains about him running stuff there, it's gonna be a problem, I think.
I don't think you'll see him in that reality ever, you don't wanna see him.
The previous permit was never granted.
Never is, never granted.
Oh.
You never voted.
So there is no permitting.
Correct.
So you're not supposed to be operating.
So you can't start till July first.
Well, she said she had a permit, when I went to apply, they said there was a permit on file, but now because his permit was on file, I had to do not a renewal, but I had to do it from the start.
Right.
Like as a new applicant, but there is a permit on file, according to the lady that you, at the desk.
Filed but not granted.
Yeah.
No, that was current.
No, he wasn't current.
And what she said was that they were waiting for that to expire. And then at such time, they were gonna not renew it. Now, that's according to what I understand and what I was told.
Well, you know, if he approved this, he can't start till July. And there's no, I don't know, we don't have anything to have it start early, do we, can we?
I don't think there's anything that's early if they and I think this is more, better question for potentially Anne, but if the other license was never actually approved for whatever reason, then there isn't a license currently there, I don't know, I don't think there's anything we can do as a stopgap.
What do you mean?
Well, ninety two is.
I don't think there's anything that we can't extend it or make it earlier.
We can't give it temporary for a month?
Well, could that be researched to see if there's one that did exist, because for us to shut down now would just, it would kind of be like almost impossible to start it back up.
This is the history of the long agenda, every time we met. Everything was either discussed and then placed on file or held, wasn't placed on file, it was held. So it was never.
Does this entertainment license come with a piece of paper like a
Yes.
like every other license, so that piece of paper is not physically at their location, and it never was.
Is the placement just closed?
No, it was closed, they closed April eighteenth, and we reopened it June first.
So, you know, they're still operating, though they didn't have a license?
And one of my concerns is still that, as the application states, that anybody who's a partner affiliated with an appointed agent would have to fill out this, we have to the applicant would have to say that anybody had a conviction in the last five years, this is, the information from Mr. Henry is that no one will say any dealings or leadership with the club has any convictions in the last five years, and again, Fred Bell is still the guy as the agent with the Wisconsin Department of Financial Institution. I mean, at this point, my concern is that A, it's not gonna take hold until July, B, the application currently isn't correct based on the fact that Fred Bell is still involved, and if they're gonna request more information regarding that operation plan that Fred's not gonna be involved at all, that's not gonna be something that's in place right now.
Well, uh, can we okay, it's subject to necessary requirements, and that's one of the requirements, may I ask to show something that
we could, Fred Bell isn't there?
But as far as this extra month, there's nothing that we could do.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Mr. Chair? Item ninety-two, which is for the sixteen seventeen year, was never acted upon. That couldn't use that to extend the month. But again, the issue there is the name on the application, right?
It's a wrong name. And.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think I'd like to find some way to allow them to keep, remain open, they've already opened, in good faith, they, they didn't open in thumbing their nose at the city and saying, well, we're gonna go and do whatever we want to do anyhow, they've been working with us. I think we need to find a way to work with them in order to keep them open for at least this one month.
That previous application for the sixteen seventeen, Anne, this is a broader question for you, if Mr. Henry would have an application for sixteen seventeen, which would be up in about a month or less, that's something that would be potentially useful. In the circumstances, that's something we could act on shortly.
You would act on that either on July, June twentieth at the next council meeting? Or you'd have to have a special council meeting?
I'm just trying to think of how we can legally, I mean, the Fred Bell application never went through, Fred Bell has been convicted of a crime related to drug use. This committee was gonna revoke that if we could have, and we didn't, so right now, there's just no license there. If he wants a license for this here, he can apply for it, but that's the only way I can think of getting a license there any earlier.
For sixteen seventeen?
Sixteen seventeen. The problem I see is opening the door, if we're trying to make exceptions for this or here, or say, yeah, you can start a little bit early, where do we draw that line?
Right, like always. Well, if you fill out the application now, you still won't, I mean, you did the background check and everything on it already, correct? Everything that we had to do with the number ninety-one?
The police, yeah.
It's not on the agenda, we couldn't go around it anyways, so it's not on the agenda.
Well, the new one is, right, one if he filled it out today, it wouldn't be on there, the other one is, I mean.
You would still need to have the proper LLC name from the Department of Financial Institution, still need to have the building health and the police inspection.
Mr. Chair?
All in.
So do you understand what's happening, we're kind of caught in a bit of a legal, we can't give it to you before July first, because the other gentleman's name on it is on it.
Right, right, right.
We can't have you fill out the application, take care of it tonight, because it hasn't been properly notified. I think the best we can do is, is get you to start July first, subject to the necessary requirements. And then if you still wanted to apply and get approved on the twentieth, which gives you ten days basically to work in the month. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's worth it for you or not, but I think the best we can legally do is July first.
We'll pretty much kill it, because it's just to start, and then you pull the, the rug gets pulled, and then the people that comes, they're gonna get disenchanted, they're gonna get disengrown. And I know, I mean, I just didn't have any knowledge. I was understanding that there was still a permit there, and that it, I'm saying that was my understanding, which, so I don't know, you just probably just have to, just wash it. I would, like I said, I've passed out five hundred of these, and now you got people coming, and they can't get there, they can't get in, and it makes it kind of like it's a fire sword joke, you know, and so I don't know, I don't know. And then people have donated money to get this running, and it's like, am I a liar, am I, you know what I'm saying, it, for all the good it could do, it would be counteractive.
I think here's, here's I think here's what we do, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, subject to the necessary requirements, and ask staff to work with you to to help work this through, but there's, but there's no guarantee that they can, they can do that, but I'm sure staff will work with you the best they can.
They're willing to do everything you ask, which I've done in the past, that's why I even came forth, because I saw the potential problems, and asked you to take my name off the papers. Because I didn't wanna be caught up in the aftermath.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair, yeah, and talking to staff, in particular, to the city attorney's office, is it fair to say the will of this committee is that we want them to be able to open and remain open for this month, is that correct?
With the provision, there's no problem.
If we could.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So legal and noses clean.
Okay, so so you, you're gonna make the motion to approve subject to necessary requirements, and one of them is a statement that Mr. Bell is not allowed in?
And the cleaning up of the LLC, his name has to be taken out.
So let's do that first here. So, all in may, made the motion, all in wrote, second it. Is there any further discussion on this? Any other questions, Nick?
I don't know, and I'll work with Mr. Henry, give us a call tomorrow, I'll be in pre-trials online.
So he's gonna have to, he's gonna show me everything I need to do.
We don't know that we'll be able to find a solution, we're directing him to try as hard as they can.
If there's a solution, I'll find it and we'll work it out.
Okay, yeah.
If there is.
Okay, any further discussion?
And he's in court tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning.
So you're gonna call me sometime tomorrow afternoon?
You're calling him or he's calling you?
I'll call you, I got your number.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you so much, and I honestly need to say, well, Mike laughed a lot, I already proved you wrong on that one.
Okay, number, we got number ninety-two. This we just place on file, ma'am? This is the, the motion to place is on file.
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Navid Ruwana? Randawa?
Hello.
Okay, it's the liquor store. Oh, this, this is a renewal, correct?
It's a new application.
Oh, isn't it?
Same VDA, new entity. Same doing business as.
Right.
Yeah, there's a liquor store there.
Right, right. It's gonna keep the same name.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could? You look familiar, are you related, the previous operator there, no?
No, I'm leasing the store actually from Devinder Tour, which I leased a store from him right now in Milwaukee, so I have another one.
The one in forty-fourth and Capitol?
Yeah.
What about the operator before that?
Before that?
I how long is?
What's her name?
I'm trying, was that Ruby, Rup Hinder?
Yeah, she's my mom.
She's your mom, so you're Ruby's daughter?
Ruby's daughter, yes.
Okay.
You have a good memory.
Because we had some problems with Ruby.
Right.
Is Ruby still gonna be working there?
No.
I think she does not have a license, and we had deemed her unlicensed both for the numerous violations. If I recall correctly, trying to remember, yeah. So, she's, won't be working there.
No.
Because we had, I think we can, we had a problem there, she was working without a license routinely.
Okay.
I'd go by and go, I'd have to call the police. So you're Ruby's daughter, and you're essentially around the same business as it has been, the liquor store, right? Is there any? All in may?
More of a curiosity, are you doing anything to spruce up the store?
I'm probably gonna add more inventory. So far, I really don't know, I actually have to just have to check, you know, depending on what the previous person who was leasing it from, what they did, so.
Anybody else have anything? Move a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
So, it's a subject to.
Subject to necessary requirements.
Who seconded?
Me.
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 What's your name on here? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Just by by all the rules, make sure you card, any question at all, just card, because we do send people through, you know, checking on, and everything, so.
And make sure you have a license.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have Danny. Oh, I, I told Danny he doesn't have to come.
Okay.
Because he was issued, he was calling, we were calling him in front of us because he wasn't issued the license yet. And that's why, even though he's applying for the next one, because it wasn't issued yet, we call him in front of us. Well, he was issued at
It said this morning.
This morning. So then we have no reason to really call him, so, so there's basically just a renewal.
Did he say when he's gonna open?
Soon, they, they says, they you know, they're getting, they're stocking the shelves and everything now, I guess. So, do I have a motion?
Move approval, second.
I don't know if we have to go, subject is approved. Who's subject?
I seconded.
Okay, so.
Isn't subject to necessary requirements always a?
Yeah, they always are.
Definitely.
That's correct.
So is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Motion carried.
Laugh a minute.
Fatima Garcia. Are you taking this over?
Yes.
Have you been working there or anything?
Oh, yeah, since I was like fifteen.
Pardon me?
Since I was fifteen.
You don't look fifteen now.
Hasn't been that long?
That's a compliment.
Oh, thank you, thank you, okay, this is catch up for me.
He looked twelve years old. Okay, so, so you're familiar how it runs and everything, and you're familiar how to, you know, make sure you card everybody?
Definitely, yeah.
You know, and, and just, you know, you can put up a sign, you know, hopefully we don't offend you if we card you, because, you know, we're gonna have nothing, we're gonna have a lot of problems, both in restaurants and with, with people, so you need to really watch that. Does anybody else have anything?
Good question. Are you gonna own the building as well, or you own the property?
No.
Leasing it or?
Um, we're leasing it, yeah.
Okay, in terms of maintenance, that, that stretch of greenfield avenue's really cleaned up over the last few years, and I think you guys have done a good job of cleaning it up as well, but if you can make sure it keeps up with the garbage getting dumped and things like that.
Okay.
There were problems in the past with residents, and I just don't appreciate those calls.
Yeah, we, we have problems, because we have our dumpsters outside, and we try to lock them and everything, but for some reason, we have like mattresses just laying there where
They show up?
Yeah, they just, so we have to clean it up.
Well, if you see somebody get a license, I'm like, that is illegal.
And one other thing, I noticed, the car lot next door, do you have any relationship with the?
The one that owns the car lot is actually the one that
Owner of the building. Well, I just noticed they park a lot of rental, a lot of cars on that lot. I don't know if that's illegal or not, but. I don't know if that's illegal or not, but, uh, I guess we could take that up separately, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move approval, second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Very briefly, before you call the next one, on ninety-one, um, Moni, Matthew, I'm sorry, Monica had come up with an idea that potentially we could amend to two thousand seventeen eighteen to two thousand sixteen seventeen application for Mr. Henry. Um, we could deny the two thousand sixteen seventeen by Mr. Bell, since that hasn't been acted on, and that might be sufficient to give him.
So, so instead of, instead of.
We just amend his current application for next license year to this license year.
Does that mean he has to pay another two hundred fifty dollars?
I don't know.
For his next year of application, yes.
I'm unsure if you've worked that out with the clerk's office, or if there's anything about.
It's only three weeks.
Right, I would.
Do we have, do we have the Bell's money yet?
I don't know if they tell.
We have the previous guy's money?
I presume he paid to.
Pretty sure we could.
Okay, so let's, let's do number, so we, we, we voted for number two, ninety-two to place on file, so you wanna change it to deny?
We can, I could, I also have Donald Henry's number, so I'll bring it up now, that I can try to call him and get him to come back, if you guys want him here for that.
I don't think he has to be here.
He doesn't have to be here, no.
I, I think he'd be more than willing that he'll use this one, and then tell him he's gotta reapply.
And deny the ninety-two and amend ninety-one to two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Okay, so we have to recall the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
By Alderman May, uh, placing on file?
The problem is obviously the subject to necessary requirements, and that Fred Bell is still, his name is on, he's the registered agent.
Right.
So as soon as he gets that straightened out with the state of Wisconsin?
State of Wisconsin, and he gets the letter, the, the approval information that you guys wanted, subject to approval.
Yeah.
The updated, um, business plan.
That could be this week, then.
Could be tomorrow?
Could be tomorrow, that's a possibility.
I, I don't think we need to call him, I think he'd be more than willing to do that, so, uh.
Motion reconsider number ninety-two, second, motion reconsider and approve, uh, deny, sorry, number ninety-two.
Okay, uh.
And the basis for that would be the conviction for Mr. Fred Bell?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh.
Reconsidered, other.
Right. Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna leave that for you.
Mm-hmm.
For that, so, but, uh, okay, so now, uh, now, you made the motion for denial?
Yeah, to reconsider and deny.
Okay, and Alderman has seconded. Give me a mark, this is all done, cause I, I get too many checks on here already.
Need new sheet.
Okay, all, all in favor to reconsider?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? And that's all we need, we don't need another vote, so. Okay, and then on ninety-one, um, like to make an amendment, somebody like to make a motion, make amendment to.
Move amend number ninety-one to, so it reads as it's a s- sixteen seventeen entertainment club license.
Sixteen seventeen.
Somebody seconded?
Second.
Second, okay, uh, is there any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, uh, then we should vote. We, we should really vote to approve as amended.
Subject to the necessary requirements.
Subject to. As amended, subject to.
Okay, uh.
Same requirements number four, the.
All, all, all Omega?
Bartletchy procedure.
Alderman May gonna make the motion?
Sure.
And Alderman Roque gonna second it?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I think Monica.
Alright, we're going back on the, Mr. Chair, going back on this issue, I do wanna just address the two hundred fifty or two hundred sixty dollars that he had to pay.
Sure. Yes.
Um, is there any way, as I look to the table, you know, that we can, uh, count?
I got twenty bucks.
Now, he already, he already made and filed the application for, and, and paid for the seventeen eighteen year, can we allow that to, to apply to his new seventeen eighteen license?
My understanding, the committee can, you know, forego that, you know, saying that he doesn't have to, when he makes a new application, he doesn't have to, uh, repay, okay?
Okay.
Prorate it.
I think we're close.
Okay. Uh, we don't.
By the time he gets this.
We're just gonna have a consensus on this.
Yeah, sure.
Pretty much consensus, you know, I don't think we need a formal vote on it, am I correct?
Do you want that stated in the minutes?
If you want it to be in the minutes, then if we voted aye, it's fine, we'll work together to see what we can do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then we have, uh, Charles Lindbergh.
License.
Okay. Okay, you're. Oh, you're taking over.
H- HD hideout.
HD hideout, have you done this before?
I had a license to operate in South Milwaukee.
Oh, okay, so you guys kinda switching, he's going to South Milwaukee, you're coming here?
Uh, I believe that's a potential scenario.
Okay, uh, so, so you've been running a bar, you know what?
I've been out for three years.
Oh, okay, are, are you familiar with the problems that we had here with the, uh?
No, I'm not.
You know, this place through the years, you know, we had, we had a lot of problems, uh, a few years ago, and then it, then it settled down, and there was no problems in a long time. Then all of a sudden, we had, and, and truthfully, most of the problems were with Danny, rather than, you know, actual people there, but, you know, you, you, but right there with the residential neighborhood, and I've always had the policy that, you know, you have to live with them, they don't have to live with you. So you try to keep the people quiet, you try to, you know, you know, make sure that someone picks up stuff, if there's, you know, somebody's throwing garbage around or something, you gotta pick all this stuff up and anything. And, uh, just abide by all the rules, card everybody, and, you know, you, you're gonna be hiring new people, or?
Yeah, I'm just gonna start clean.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody there should, I mean, it's better to bring in the people I know and I trust, and then I can monitor them better.
Okay, uh, does anybody else have anything?
Mr. Chair.
Alderman.
Are you gonna live upstairs? I think Danny lived there, right? Or, I see you have a West Alice address already, so you're not gonna be living there?
No.
Okay, um, and, uh, I think you were here earlier, we were talking about another bar where the problem is, people sit in a bar for six, seven hours. Or they've been drinking somewhere else for six or seven hours, the idea is that licensed bartenders should stop, stop serving people at some point. That's, that's where a lot of the problems step.
I don't know who any of these other people are, I don't know what bars do, or I would, I would love to know what bars you were talking about.
Well, it doesn't really, well, that would. The owner.
Guys just hear Flammers.
Flammers, yeah, but, but the, the police report said the people had been drinking for a long time, but turns out they hadn't been drinking in his bar.
First person.
I personally have a problem when people sit in bars for six or seven hours.
That's a long time.
Yeah, that's a long time, yeah.
Yeah, and if they're not drinking enough, you don't want them there for six.
No, I don't want somebody drinking.
Neither.
He has one beer in six hours, then.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion here?
Move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Good luck.
By the way, you, you can pick, to be voted on in council later on, uh, you can pick up the license.
Mail in June twenty-third, it's not good.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
Um, Charlie Owens, are they still in business? They gonna sue you for using the name, or?
Uh, I heard there was only two other names, one was in Greenfield or Greedyale.
Well, that was a chain at one time.
Yes, I heard it was something still in St. Petersburg or something.
Oh, okay, well, hopefully you won't get a cease and desist letter.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Jeffrey Gruger.
They don't get a copy of our minutes anyways.
They're not watching us on YouTube right now.
Okay, this is, uh.
Tell me this all approved?
Uh, well, this is seventeen eighteen.
Oh, correct.
Okay, so this is the new one, and we never issued you a license, because you haven't opened yet, right?
Correct.
So it's, so it's the same.
That seems, okay.
So, uh, does anybody got any new questions? Is everything, is everything going okay so far?
We're just working on our floors today.
Oh, okay.
So we're hoping to be open in mid-July. That's our goal right now.
Okay. Great.
And we had a great à la carte day.
Well, good, good.
It was awesome.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nice and easy.
Mark Lutz.
Hi, Mark.
Okay, uh, you're just taking over the restaurant, or just the?
No, I had, I had the license in, in my real estate company, that I have, and that was a problem last year, because the state, the state of Wisconsin would send me, um, suggested sales tax that I held down.
Yeah.
Because it was a real estate company, I don't need any sales tax, so it got really back and forth on the phone for hours, and I'm just switching it over to my cheese store.
Okay.
So this is for the cheese store, or?
No, it's for kebabs.
For kebabs.
Yeah, I had it under a real estate corporation last year, that was a mess, yeah.
Move approval. Second.
What are you looking at, what's wrong?
I'm just, you're operating kebabs?
No, I'm not operating, I just have, I have the license, like, last year.
He owns the premises.
Well, I understand that, but the license is supposed to go to the operator, not the landlord.
No, I asked that, uh, I was told I could go either way.
He's the license holder.
He's the license holder.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's who you ran it last year, right?
Well, I, I guess I didn't know that, I didn't know that was okay, but, we call operators in here all the time and say, you're supposed to be operating the place. Well, we have these straw purchases, this straw situation, like sixty-five hundred, not that there's any problem here, you know, we, and you're, you know. Am I misunderstanding that? City attorney.
He just stepped away.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nick.
Uh, do, you wanna ask Nick a question when he gets?
No, I'd be, I'll, I'll.
If it's a problem, we can, up until the day it's kicking back.
In fact, I went over some of it with him, with the attorney.
I just, I just.
You don't like doing that?
If it was me, I wouldn't do it, because if they serve minors, it's on you, you're not operating the place, you're not seeing, you're not there.
Why is that?
You know, that's my, that would be me.
Well, it's just.
That would be me, you could put it in the lease, if I, if I can, like, I am assuming you could put it in your lease that says the license stays there, you can't take it to other premises, if that's why you do it like that.
I think I have that in lease to that way.
Yeah, well, then, you know, like I said, I think you're taking some risk on yourself by being a licensed operator, being a licensee.
Can I, not to hold up his license for this year, can we transfer it over to his name?
Yeah, we, we'd switch it later, right, there may be a small fee involved.
Yeah, so you can put in the application for, on your own.
Without interruption?
Yeah.
Yes, as long as yours can.
It'd be in your name until we okay his.
I, I would, I just, I, yeah, I wouldn't be taking that risk.
Yeah, makes sense. And then if he goes out of business, would that license still be viable at that location?
Well, you're, you're the landlord, so if you just shut down, uh, you would have, I believe it's sixty days to apply for the license.
Yeah.
And say, give a tenant like six months.
Well, you could, you could apply for it right away.
Right.
You got sixty days to apply for it.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Oh, and then I can hang out.
And then you're just explaining to us what you're doing with it.
Oh.
We call you in every couple of months, and say.
Yeah, we, uh, quite a few years ago, we passed that simply because there was a case with two guys owning the place, and, uh, the leasing never applied for, and so we, the license was gone, so we, so we made, so we're giving sixty days of always to the owner, so that it can't get, you know.
We don't want you sitting on a property that's a bar, doesn't have a license.
Okay.
Right, so, yeah, there, there's no problem, so.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion and second, uh, approval, do I, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So you're all set?
Yeah, just come on.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Jose? There's no Jose here? Uh, oh, this is for the realty place, we call, we call him in front of us, right?
This is the second time.
For the realty?
This is classic auto?
This is, no, this is the.
The guy that owns classic auto.
Restaurant that they're remodeling with all the linings.
No.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're working on it now.
We do it without you.
Right.
But it's, uh, I took it as gonna become a realtor?
No, that's what they.
No, it's a company that owns.
No, that's just, this holding company.
Okay, correct, cause someone said it's gonna be a restaurant, it's a realty, uh.
I did not send him a certified letter, cause it was a short period of time, I could send him a certified letter.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just call this, we'll just call this, cause we wanna get that done, or they're. That fifty stick is just going down tubes.
That would have happened in Sixtackles or.
Any, any Elizabeth Burns?
I don't.
Okay, it is, like, you know, they're now finally working on.
Yep.
Okay, this is for, oh, that's right.
Bobble heads.
For bobble heads, yes.
Really bobble heads.
Have you ever done this before?
Um, I've bartended the last two years.
Okay.
Where?
The stage in Milwaukee, Seventy Second and Fond du Lac.
Okay. Okay, and uh. You're obviously then, you know, it's all the rules and regulations?
Yes.
I mean, you say that, bar you though. You know, licensed bartender on the premises, you can only buy from licensed wholesalers, you can't go to Pick and Save.
Yeah.
I see ten amusement machines.
I figured I'd ask for more than what I needed.
I think we have a limit on how many you can get before it becomes, gets a, gets an arcade license or something?
I think it's, there's like four in there right now. It's not gonna be any more than four, but.
There's a, there's a limit also what the state will allow on the, so when it says amusement machines, these are like these video poker games, is that what we're talking about?
There's four of those in there right now and there's a um arcade type of game.
Yeah, like pinball or?
Yeah, the um, like Asteroids or something.
And who's, I guess, the distributor, it's a reputable distributor, they'll, they'll be aware of, is it Reds or do you know what it is?
Um.
You don't know?
Oh my goodness, I'm trying to think of the name of the one that's in there right now, but I'm not sure who I'm gonna go through yet, so.
Okay, yeah, I understand that, but but the distributor should be aware of that, so you, I don't want you to get caught in a jam where you have seven video poker games and suddenly the state guys are here, so.
Yes. Nope.
It, you only can have six?
There's a limit, uh, it is a, it's a small number, it's a small number, yeah.
I'm looking, I'm trying to find it.
Five, five.
What?
I'm looking right now, trying to find it.
Yeah.
Okay, he's looking at it.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's five.
I, I know that there's four in there right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but you, well, when you put down ten, does that mean?
Yeah, that's.
That means ten altogether with the.
It's one to five, so five max.
Five max on the ones that tally points or spit out coupons or whatever, but they're not for gambling.
Okay.
But there's.
No.
But there's this uh, uh, does this, when you put down the ten, does that mean anything? She has another pinball machine that's not a video poker?
No, the limit is only on the number of video, we'll call it video poker.
Right, but I'm saying, when she put down ten, she didn't put down machines, she put down arcade stuff, so is it, so is that, she, what I'm saying, she she can keep the ten.
I think this committee can limit it down to whatever you think is appropriate.
But, but if she has other, other types of machines?
Like an electronic darts or?
Right.
And I do, there's two in there.
Did you count it, that and the ten?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So it's six right now.
That, the asteroid.
Hmm.
So that would make it seven. So then I was thinking, well, ten is kinda safe.
So, so, well, you, well, you know you only can have five of the other ones. I think, I think we could leave the ten.
I know, I can only have five.
Yeah.
I.
You know, in there, because it doesn't say video poker.
It should be fine.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
So make sure there's, we don't.
If somebody from the state goes in there and writes you up, then you might be coming back to see us, if not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mind your Ps and Qs, I guess.
I love it.
Yeah, I just, you know, we always ask you, you know, just card everybody, you know, it's, it's, bars are getting tougher and tougher. I mean, anybody walks through that door and everything, you you just don't know what's gonna happen, so.
Mr. Chair?
All in wad.
So Amy, you've been a bartender for two years?
Two years.
Okay. And really no management experience there? I I I want you to understand that you're gonna be responsible for it goes on there.
I understand that I understand.
Are you gonna, is this gonna be your full-time job?
No.
No, you have a full-time job and you're gonna be running this?
Yes.
And this is gonna be open at six AM to two AM?
Well, I did put that down just to be safe, but no, I do not plan on opening up at six, but if there's a warning that something is going on.
You wanna be able to.
I wanna be able to open.
World Cup game starts at six AM or something, is it, cause it's in London and, yeah.
You know. Packer game sometimes come on at weird times if they're planning.
They may play, they may play in London, yeah.
And and so what's your full-time job?
Um, I'm a design engineer at AT&T.
Okay.
A little different.
Yeah, trust engineer, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
He's an engineer himself, that's why he said that.
AT&T would hire him.
Like trains.
So try not to hold that against you.
Try not to hold AT&T against me.
So, you're gonna hire a manager or?
I will eventually. We're gonna, it's gonna be slowly opened, um there's still a lot of work that needs to be done inside, just with cleaning and everything like that. I wanna get it painted once I get in there. Um carpet might need to be pulled out, new carpet put in, it's indoor-outdoor carpet, but it's pretty dirty. And it's been closed for a long time, so.
Right.
You know, get everything freshened up and then open up slowly and then as it's open more, then hire people and get them in there.
More boys. Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe just remind the committee that there's that thirty day, gotta be open once every thirty days once you're approved.
Unless they're extenuating circumstances. Yeah. If you're not open in the first thirty days after July one, we may call you back here and say, when are you, when, when aren't you open yet?
Why aren't you open?
Okay.
Or let the committee know as well and just say, hey, I got this going on, just so you know, and then they can proactively help you out.
Okay.
Yeah, cause seventeen eighteen. So do I have a motion?
Move approval, subject to necessary requirements.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You wanna oppose? Motion carries. Again, one oh one is uh David Rikler for bobbleheads.
Well, place on file?
Yeah.
Move place on file.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just hold.
These, what's, what's these? Uh, top dog, uh, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that place. Now, we did call him in?
Yes.
Is Ron out there?
Do you think it was?
So I guess the question for the building inspector, has he heard anything from this licensee?
He's been working on his electric plans, but we still have not been in the building since early November. They've been in there for any inspections or anything.
And the health commissioner?
Health was in there a couple weeks ago.
We're in there, there's still no board. Not really any progress from what we've been in a couple months.
And move for denial based on non-compliance?
Just hold, I think, right?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna hold them.
He's not gotten his.
I'm with you.
We haven't approved his sixteen seventeen yet, right?
He might show up at our assessors.
Probably.
And what's he gonna say? And it, will it matter?
Yeah, we're, we're just gonna hold everything here, I'm not gonna. So, okay, we're just gonna hold that, uh. And then we're gonna hold Jose. I believe that's all we have.
Oh, you guys are really good timing here.
Yeah. The question is, do I have time to go home and throw a suit on?
I think so.
I have eight minutes.
Can I motion to adjourn?
I'll wait for you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair. So I don't have, I mean, I have a full.